Evening, everybody. We are here for the city council meeting for the city of Bonny Lake for June 13th, 2023. I believe the microphones are on now. Is... Thank you, Madam Clerk. Okay, first thing we do is salute the flag. So if everybody could stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, free and just as for all.
Thank you. And Madam Clerk, could you call the roll, please?
Mayor McCullough.
I'm here.
Deputy Mayor Carter.
Here.
Councilmember Baldwin.
Here.
Councilmember Evans.
Here.
Councilmember Fullerton.
Here.
Councilmember McLemmons.
Present.
Councilmember Swatman.
Present.
And Councilmember Watson.
Here.
Okay, looks like Councilmember McLemmons has asked to remove AB 2382 and 84 from tonight's consent agenda to full council issues as items B and C. Do we have a motion?
So moved second.
All right, all approved?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, nobody's opposed. So that now, we have 82 and 83 being moved to a full council issue. Let's move on to announcements, and I believe Deputy Mayor Carter has an announcement.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to just quickly kind of address the elephant in the room before everybody gets started, and I hope that everybody will give us their comments about what they think and whatnot. It seems that there has been some misinformation put out on social media, and I want to make it clear as to what it is that we're doing with a resolution here. And I'll actually read the resolution. It comes later in the packet. It is Resolution 3165, "A resolution of the City Council of the city of Bonny Lake, Pierce County, Washington, authorizing staff to negotiate an agreement with Mount Rainier Football Club for a private partner, public-private partnership for development of park and recreation facilities." Essentially, what this does is give direction to staff to negotiate and talk to the Mount Rainier Football Club about potentially doing something with the rec program and doing something with property, which is the Reed property out off of Park Ubine Road. This is an opportunity, I think, to do something with our parks and with the rec program. I know everybody loves the rec program, and nobody wants to get rid of it. I've talked to everybody on the council, and nobody wants to get rid of the rec program. We all just want to make sure that it stays, and it stays funded, and we're able to do something with it in a positive manner. So with that, I'm sure everybody else wants to talk about it here just a little bit in your public comments, but I just wanted to make that clear as to what that was. And then, Jason, this is the staff who would essentially be doing that job, and if you want to make a comment as far as what, just to confirm or whatnot, if I'm speaking correctly or what?
Ms. Sullivan, did you receive? So the resolution is stated correctly. We were proposed, were approached by Mount Rainier Football Club with a proposal. As we take all proposals when it comes to use and development of property, we bring those to the city council to see if the city council would like us to use staff time to negotiate agreements. The resolution does not bind the council or the city to any agreement. It doesn't predict an outcome. It doesn't guarantee an outcome. It doesn't even say exactly what's in the agreement. At this point, it's simply the direction from city, from the city council for us to open dialogues and channels of communication with Mount Rainier Football Club based on the proposal that they provided to us. It doesn't say that we'll accept everything in the proposal, or we'll limit it, or what the outcome will be.
So in other words, this is not a done deal by any stretch of the imagination. But anyway, that being said, do we have, okay, do we, there is no puppeteering, so let's move on to city. All right, we have two phases with this. People who are present, this would be your time to address the council on city business. The city will now enable the video and microphone for those who are attending virtually. You'll need to turn on your video and microphones on your end if you are wanting to be seen or heard. We will start with those who are here in person and move to the virtual comments afterwards. You will have five minutes, and when you come to the podium, please state your name and address for the record. So who would like to begin?
Council Mayor, I am Dan Decker, a past council member of 204170th Street East, Bonny Lake, Washington, your council mayor and directors. At a council, excuse me, at a council meeting, we placed our hands over our hearts and pledged allegiance to our American flag, and as such, we are taking an oath to protect the Constitution. When the oath to protect our Constitution is broken or not taken with due diligence, then that person repeating the pledge of allegiance is a traitor to the United States of America. There are two officers working for the city of Bonny Lake that openly violated the First, Fourth, Eighth, Ninth, and Fourteenth Amendments to the Constitution. The First did violate our Constitution, and the Second allowed these violations to occur, thus making him a co-conspirator. When I asked the First Officer for his name and badge number, he refused to give it, thus policy violation. I was informed that the police academy gives training to our Constitution. I believe the training is how to avoid our Constitution and do unethical police work within, wherein officers number one and two are examples of what I have, what I have seen. I do not believe all police officers in Bonny Lake are tyrants and bullies with guns. I did see a police officer being a foolish tyrant and bully with a gun, and the officer with him did nothing to stop the violations. Again, I am requesting that all city employees take an oath to our Constitution and take classes offered by the city concerning our Constitution. Further, that each morning, the pledge of allegiance shall be given to our American flag, and as such, honoring our Constitution. It happens in our schools, and it stopped in the 12th grade, and I don't understand why that did happen. I do understand that the Constitution, excuse me, the pledge of allegiance is a voluntary situation, but those that stand to the Constitution would do the pledge of allegiance, and those that don't, then those people are probably socialists, Marxists, communists, Nazis, or whatever you want to call them. They are not Americans. Thank you very much. One thing, I wish to thank you for putting the no parking sign issue to rest tonight. I hope that is what's going to happen up in Sky Island. Thank you, guys.
All right, thank you, Ms. Decker. Is anybody else for the good of the order?
We got started with that on June 1st. It will run through August 31st, and I'm just hoping to spread the word and also encourage anybody in this room, if they would like to participate, to let them know that I brought some adult summer reading bingo boards along, and I'm welcome, you're welcome to participate. Summer reading programs got their start as a way to support students during the summertime to make sure that they were continuing to engage in reading when they weren't in school. They have since expanded to incorporate all different ages. But one of the reasons I really like to talk to adults about the importance of summer reading is not just because you might find a new fun book over the summer, or because we have the opportunity to win a gift card if you meet your reading goals over the summer, but also because there is so much data out there to support the idea that one of the best ways to encourage kids to become lifelong readers is when they see really important adults in their life who are enjoying reading. So we have that opportunity to be a role model for them, and I think that's a really wonderful role that we all can fulfill as adults. So I thank you for your time tonight, and again, if any of you are interested, council or anyone else in the room, if you would like to sign up, I have those bingo boards with me tonight. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Erin. Do the books have pictures? I won't read a book without a picture. Anybody else for the good of the order?
Hi, my name is Emma Niles. I am currently an employee with the Parks Rec Department. I reside on Washington Street in Sumner. I am currently the head ref for the Recreation Department. I am a coach as well. For the past seven years, I've been a ref. For the past two years, I've reffed and I've coached. I am here to speak on behalf of our athletic side of our Recreation Department. Not only with this new change, do we lose our after-school sports that are feasible for all families, including our lower-income families. We will lose the way our students get to explore the world through sports. As a ref, I not only assist in the learning of sports, but the growth in the athletic mindset in a public space with all ages. Not only do we treat our athletes with an educational mindset, but we also want to teach them to be human. We create an environment where we encourage and support diversity, accountability, and accommodations. Not only do we help assist with racial aspects that happen within our athletics, but we do have students that are on different spectrums, and I myself am one ref who will go in, and I walk players down the court if they don't know how to walk. If they don't know how to dribble the ball, I will dribble the ball with them. I also want to teach them to accommodate with their families. Language that is used on the court is language that needs to be used at home. We encourage our students, we encourage our families to encourage others. Removing us from the picture will not solve your problems as a city, or will solve problems in our community. We need our, our students need us, they need us as family. We also need our staff. Moving us as staff will not help anything. We have the bond. I have reffed students from kindergarten through fifth grade who currently work with me now. I have also helped assist in the training of new refs and new staff within our community. They need us more than you think.
All right, thank you. Anybody else for the good of the order? We had two?
Hi, my name is Carrie Hubler. I'm at 8201 204th Avenue, Court East in Bonny Lake. Good evening, Mayor, council members, and staff. Last year, many of you had said that you would support the recreation program, you just didn't want to operate a childcare. You knew this would come at a price which many of you said you would be okay with. I understand that this is an exploration of possibilities of both the sports complex and taking over the recreation program with MRFC, MRAC. But if you truly want to build a better program, it needs to be given a very long thought-out process, not just a six months, or a year, or 75 days, or whatever it is. They, I would recommend inviting all of the players in East Pierce a chance to sit at the table to determine what each agency can provide our citizens to make this an amazing program, not just staff within the city hall of Bonny Lake. These should include the county parks and recreation, the school district, the neighboring cities, as well as, most importantly, your current staff, which have over 75 years of experience in the recreation field. There are a lot of people that have ideas, and there are a lot of other organizations and cities that are currently meeting without the city of Bonny Lake. They don't feel the city of Bonny Lake is a good team player in that division. So if you guys can work together with the other organizations, even the Pierce County Council, there is funding, and there are ways to make these programs together and maybe make it a bigger than just the city of Bonny Lake entity.
All right, thank you, Ms. Hubler. I'm still a little sore that you opened your coffee shop in Sumner, by the way.
Good evening. My name's Jake Russell. I currently work for, and I have lived in Bonny Lake my whole life, and I went to high school in Sumner, and I have worked with the Parks and Recreation Department for four years now. I ask you why? We fought over the same thing, not the same thing, but a, we fought over a thing over the Parks and Recreation Department last year that having to do with the before and after-school program. Why are you so determined to get rid of Parks and Rec? First, it was our before and after-school program where the kids, we give the kids a safe space to feel, to feel safe, to get to learn, and a place for the kids to be themselves. Kids come in excited to tell us about sports and events that they are going to be a part of, and they want us to come to it. And, you know, what do you, do you have to gain from that? Why do you not ask the community? You only convert, why only converse between the two parties when you have more than that? You have the community and the park recreation to talk to and converse with. I've said what I can say, and I hope to the gods above and below that you listen to your community.
All right, thank you. I'm Mr. Williams. You look good in a robe, by the way.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. Paul Williams, 5008 West Tap Street East, Lake Taps, Washington. I'm here, first, thank you. I've met many of you. I enjoy conversations with many of you. I'm not here to either oppose or support your resolution, 3165, but more to just say, please go slow. It takes a couple of years to do the research and unfold. I think that is still a pretty quick timeline, honestly. So, you know, I have all kinds of good ideas, but after they, after I research them, or other people research them, and I talk about them, sometimes they don't pan out. I realize, I appreciate, Mr. Carter, your opening statement that this is kind of an opening dialogue, nothing set in stone, but it almost feels that at least the direction is set in stone. And so I hope you guys study this more before you travel down this path. And again, part of the studying process, you might end up finding that, well, this organization might be great to develop fields, but maybe in-house is still the best place for Parks and Rec. There might be a national organization, or even a more specialized organization that actually just does the Parks and Recs for smaller cities. You might find that that's a possibility. So just take it slow, work with your partners. Do have community input like this, it's beneficial. I think when it's done slowly and built over time, you get a lot of buy-in from the community and stakeholders, and it has a longer-lasting effect on the community. So, thank you very much, and thanks again for your service.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Williams. Anybody else for the good of your order?
Hi, Doug Clevenger from, so thank you very much for this opportunity. I've been nervous in front of a group of people, and thank you to everybody that's done anything with Parks and Rec. My kids grew up in that. I coached for Sumner Soccer, helped out Sumner Soccer Club when it was a recreational club in this area. That's where my heart, my soul was, coaching. Eventually, my kids decided to move forward, a premier side of things, and they played at that level for a little bit, not very long. I agree that Parks and Rec is very important parts of the community. I think, you know, if we look at this process with regard to built space at the Reed Park, in regard to side of things, Mount Rainier Football Club, and talking to Scott today, you know, if the rec thing has to wait, we should continue to talk. I'd love to talk to anybody in this room that has ideas and wants to share their passion about whatever activity it is. Last time I spoke to a group, or spoke with a group, it was an online process, and there are people from baseball, football, rugby, disc golf, there are all kinds of ideas. So I agree with everybody in here that's talked about a community of ideas, because a broader group is always going to do better, I think, than any individual. And we remain open to that process as, as a club. I think what we would hope to do is move forward, lean forward, some things done, because we see need from this community, we see a need to leave you guys of some of that, because it's, there's so much to do in government. I understand that. I understand the difficulty, and I think that's all we want to do. We want to provide something to build on, not take anything away. No intent on taking anything away. For those of you that know Scott and all, he's one of the most passionate, hard-working, caring people. You know, sometimes I've been in the way of, of, you know, something and felt like he forgot about me. He comes back around every single time. The guy does so much. That's what he wants to do here. He really wants to meet with people. Anybody that has a desire to meet with him, please let us know. Please let me know, he wants to do that, he wanted to get that across. He's out coaching tonight on a field. As far as Parks and Rec is concerned, we have a kid that's in our program, Adam Taylor, that I know well. He, he coaches. We have people within the group, golf, other golf, he runs our NFL flag. So we're well-established within the community. We just have, we'll continue, basically what we're doing is talking, coming up with good ideas, great ideas, and then making them happen, what Scott's really good at, making stuff. And so that's what I just kind of want to put out to you, is we'd love to start making things happen, whether we have to separate the two ideas and talk about one over a long period of time and get moving on another, so we have space to play once we decide to play, ready for it either way. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Okay, thank you. Do we have anybody else for the good of the order?
The council, families. I am an employee of the city of Bonny Lake. My name is Laura Zurr. Some of you staff know me, most of the council do not, if we haven't darkened our door yet. I'm the program coordinator for the Recreation Department for the city, and I've been directly related to the city of Bonny Lake since the transition of, all of 2017. I have unofficially, or as a side, represented the city since 2008, when I became, regards to inter-local agreement, as an employee of the Sumner Bonny Lake School District, at the Rec Department, sorry, coordinator. I have worked in recreation for over 25 years. Adjust, adapt, and overcome, making it work, Mr. Clevenger said. That is the unofficial model of every recreation department across this country. Find a way to make it work. Adapt, adjust, overcome. We can do it. I want to go back to the start of our program with the city of 2017, just for a matter of entering it into public record, and because I'm very proud of our staff and, and their dedication. I was here when you barely passed the resolution to take on the Recreation Department in 2017. You've stayed true to the opposition that you voiced then to now. You said, you were here, let it be known that our highly successful before and after-school activities club was childcare, and that the city needed not to be in that business. You got your wish. We were also told by council members that night that we had our work cut out for us. Fantastic. We were up for the challenge. We were ready to take it on, whatever you envisioned, whatever direction, we were there for you. And push forward to do what we do best, program sports and activities for the community, not knowing any expectations from the city other than make money and having the underlying feeling that our job was constantly on the line. 2020 hits, and everyone shuts down, and our entire department was furloughed. We were the only department in the city, and as far as we can tell from the entire state, that was sent home, extended period, that we were furloughed. Other cities had their recreation departments do what they do best, help the families of their communities. City Pial mentioned recently at our EOC meeting that their Recreation Department was a critical part of their COVID response team, because those who choose to be in this line of work want to be out there, hands-on, helping the community, and they also know how to make it work, who the other stakeholders are, how to get the job done. It was clear during this time, however, to us, that there was no intent to bring the Recreation Department back. How easy would it have been to eliminate us at that time? No one would know or be able to rally for us. However, someone did know and did rally for us, and was able to convince the city manager and then Mayor Johnson to bring us back. Thank you, David Wells, for going to bat for us and the community to get, to give us a chance. We came back with a vengeance. We planned and executed four weeks of our Action Day Camp under CDC DOH guidelines and working with our staff and the cooperation of the district in the use of the Daffodil Valley Elementary Gymnasium, we were able to run a successful camp with zero outbreaks. Kids were able to be kids, make friends, laugh, have lunches together, and families who are often frontline workers were able to do their job, knowing that their children were in a healthy, supportive environment. Next, it was September and distance learning. We created a plan of how this could be done. No one had done it before, but we made it work. Our staff became experts very quickly on Zoom and other tools that the district was utilizing to instruct their students. We insisted, we assisted in helping kids not only be able to do the workload, but we had a schedule of meetings for each children in their group that their, their group director followed, keeping them on task, letting them know kids aren't really meeting-oriented. There you go. There were lunches, resources, and some kid meltdowns. We were there to help them through that and succeed, both school-wise, emotional-wise, mental support, not only for them, but their family. During this time, there was constant communication between our department and the district. Alex was talking to Dr. Two and Superintendent Lori Dent on a weekly basis. Communication, safety, and community were the forefront. We adjusted, adapted to whatever the district was doing next, which in this case was hybrid. Now add to above bus schedules and opposite day schedules. We were able to expand to a few more kids in our program, and we did this safely. Again, no outbreaks, no shutdowns, nothing. We did this until January 2021, when the kids returned full-time to the classrooms. The custodian Daffodil Elementary was, who was there with us during the summer and fall, kept telling us that what we did was amazing for those kids and families, that we were the for-runners to others. We put our necks on the line to do, to do these programs, and we crushed it. Everyone was healthy and stronger for having been in our program. Yes, wrap it up? Sorry. Okay, we believe recognition from the manager. Okay, we have a code of collaboration in our department, and we're just saying, with Team Bonny Lake, but we've had no teamwork in the vision out for the Rec Department. We hear those. We want to be at the table. We want to discuss whatever revisions and future that you see for us. We want to be part of that. We've heard it before from you, so we want to be there. Recreation is more than job, it's a heart, and our heart, and this is strong. Thank you. Together, we can make it work.
Thank you. Okay, do we have anybody else for the good of the order?
Dear Mayor and City Council members, I stand before you this evening as an employee of the Sumner Bonny Lake Recreation Department. I was hired as an intern employee with my contract ending August 31st, 2023, the inter-local has not been signed or agreed upon. Sumner, the Sumner Bonny Lake Rec Department is so much more than recreation itself. It allows our community to have sports for our children and reasonable rates for our children of all ages to be able to participate, have fun, and learn the fundamentals of sports. It builds social skills with other peers their age and to build long-lasting friendships as well. We offer so much more than sports. We have the father-daughter dances that give the special night for a daughter and father to bind and share those memories for a lifetime to look back, to look back and remember on. We have the Fun Run that we do every year that allows the community and family and friends to attend. The Recreation Department has been around for 32 years and has provided affordable rates for every family, especially those that may not have a lot of money, but would rather, but would like their child to participate in sports. I am speaking from the heart as a mom and an employee. If we take this all away, what does that leave us for our kids? Crime is at the highest, and if we take these away, it's just going to create boredom and more chaos. So I'm also speaking as a mom of kids as well. Thank you for your time.
Well, thank you. You did wonderfully. None of my daughters will dance with me, by the way. As many as I take them to. Do we have anybody else for the good of your order? Okay, I believe we are done with our face-to-face communications, so now we will start those that are virtual. Again, you will have five minutes. If you'd please state your name and address for the record. I'm looking at the same thing as everybody, right? Okay, good. All right, it does not look like All right. It does not look like anybody is responding. We will have five, four, two, one. Okay, we will now, the city will disable all video and microphones for those who are attending virtually and we will go on to committee reports. Finance, Finance Committee, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We had our meeting today at five o'clock upstairs. It's open to the public if anybody's interested. We had a personnel update. There's a lot of retirements coming through Public Works, but we have been recruiting, we're up to 13 seasonals so far in, in going forward there. We had a discussion on Resolution 3163, which is the Pierce County Opioid Abatement Council Interlocal Agreement. This is something that the council has kind of already talked about a little bit, but essentially is, it's on the consent agenda for tonight. This is in regards to $475,000 over 15 years that would be available to the city of Bonnie Lake to assist with things like treatment, recovery and, and that kind of thing. It has to be approved by the, what will be the new Pierce County Abatement Council. So there's an extra step in there to see that it is being spent properly or what. The next thing we talked about was Resolution 3166. This was a reject of all bids for Granger Springs Pump House. Unfortunately, we had only set aside approximately two points. I can't remember the exact amount, 2.2, 2.3 million. And the bids came in over three million. So the thought was to reject the bids. We need to shrink the scope of the project. And it came to finance specifically because of the timing aspect of it needing to get done. So it'll have to go, go back. That's also on consent. And then Resolution 3167, authorizing the professional services agreement with Gallagher Benefit Services to provide engagement survey and consultant services. It's essentially for an employee survey. That'll be essentially to find out what it is that we can do to retain employees. And it's difficult right now because obviously we have a lot of retirements or whatnot, but there's also a whole new workforce coming in. And so finding out what is important to employees and how to keep them is in that survey. So that's also on tonight's consent. We approved our minutes and that was it.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. We're certainly not going to ask Mr. John Stone since all the people seem to be retiring from public service. I haven't learned that lesson yet, Mr. John. Okay, thank you, Deputy Mayor. Community Development Committee, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Community Development Committee did meet on June 6th upstairs. Same room as the Finance Committee meets in. It's open to the public also. And that's five o'clock meeting times. We had several items of business and included a resolution for the city's periodic comprehensive plan update. That's that big, you know, process, multi-year thing that they're working on. So that's again, a, you know, resolution to hire the consultants to go out there and do a lot of work with public interaction and getting the plans out there to get public input on it. So that's part of that process. Recommended that for approval. Also had the Resolution 2374, which you have tonight for the SEPA code update. It's just some standard work going on there. That's I believe State Environmental Protection Act, right? For the, yes, very good. And also Resolution 3157, which is a professional services agreement for RH2 to provide design services for the new Lake Ridge 810 zone tank, which is on your regular agenda this evening. We can talk more about it when we get down to that item this evening. And also award a contract with Game Time to assemble and install Allen York Playground equipment. Notably, we're still dealing with that, kind of the details over in the committee. That is the last piece of the new ball field five area there. That's the equipment that could go out there. Options are being explored with how to install that and configuration. So staff is doing a great job in presenting many options to the council for that. So we haven't let it out of committee yet, but we soon will. And that's our items of business.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Swatman. Public Safety Committee, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Public Safety met tonight at 3:30 as we do on the second Tuesday of every month upstairs on the second floor. We had monthly reports from East Pierce Fire and Rescue. The Edgewood Station is expected to open August 1st. The construction began on the West Lake Taps Station yesterday. And the Tahali Station should go out to bid after the 4th of July. We had a report, a monthly report from Assistant Chief Boyle on Bonnie Lake Police Department. Traffic enforcement are up. DUIs are up just slightly year to year, 20 versus 18 of last year. Total misdemeanors are 123 in 23 versus 84 last year. So with, I believe we've got a full force now. Is it still short? All right. But, but as, as close as we're getting to a full force, we're able to be more proactive than reactive. And, and in doing so, we're able to police, police better. We're doing a lot more strategic things on where we park our cars, where we're patrolling and how we're responding to calls to make sure that we're, we're getting the bad guys quicker. Which leads to the prosecutor's report. It was the highest month of hearings with 592 hearings, up almost 25% from last month. 110 were Blake vacate hearings, which is the, the Blake decision on drug possession. 39 were parking tickets from Allen York Park alone. That is based on the new parking situation out there for boat trailer parkings and all the, the new things that have been going on out there. And for discovery, there were nearly 31 hours of body worn camera footage that were turned over to the, not the prosecutors, off of the defense, defense team for, for discovery. We had a report from the emergency management coordinator. We had a, we have a mass shelter in place scheduled for July 27th in which we will open our emergency operations center. This is to test draft plans that were established during the last month's FEMA training for Lahar in Maryland. We had discussions on AB 2397, Resolution 3159, an interlocal agreement with Washington State Administrative Office of Courts and Bonnie Lake Municipal Courts. This is for state reimbursement for the Blake decision for anything that we incur as far as costs as a result of those vacate costs. That is on your consent for tonight. We had a discussion on AB 23106, ordinance D 23106, accepting a donation of a trailer from the Pierce County sheriffs. This is in response to our emergency management team. It is a 50 person shelter trailer. It is a regional asset. So in the event of any sort of usage need, whether it's us or anywhere in Pierce County, we'll be able to deploy this. That is also on your consent agenda for tonight. And then we had AB 23100, Resolution 36, 3162, a boating safety program MOU with Pierce County. And that is to collect a portion of the car tabs to offset our marine, our marine unit. And that will be on the consent agenda for 6/27. We talked about a camping ordinance that our prosecutor will be bringing forward to public safety next month. And this is regarding public camping. This was something that we started pre-COVID and then we lost our prosecutor at the time. And what we were looking at was potentially being challenged in court. So now that the dust is settled, we'll be able to bring that forward and see where that takes us. And then we had a discussion on parking and partying down on 179th and the vacant street off of Sky Island and concerns for 4th of July. And Assistant Chief Boyle has got some extra staff on hand that day that will be doing extra patrol emphasis in that area. Then sure, that is limited and, and not happening. We do have emergency, or not emergency, ecology blocks up on both sides of the streets now where in years past, we had a, a chain that was cut. So hopefully that'll stop all the vehicular traffic, but we'll have the emphasis down there for foot traffic as well. We reviewed and approved our minutes and we adjourned.
I'll hide my artillery shells. And did he say anything correctly on his report? Because we have people in the audience who can help you with that.
No squiggly lines.
All right.
Thank you. I don't see any other, oh, yes, sorry, one, one other report. There, there is a ribbon cutting on Monday, June 26th at 5:00 PM at Allen York Park for the new field that's out there. That's all. Thank you.
Yes. I'll talk with you about getting some more announcements out about that so that we can have a lot of people show up, get a good showing. All right, we're moving on to the consent agenda. Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second. All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, let the record reflect that the consent agenda was passed unanimously. And now we have a community development and full council issue. First item, Madam Clerk.
This is AB 2389, Resolution 3157. The council motion would be to award a professional services agreement to RH2 to provide design services to construct a new Lake Ridge 810 zone tank.
So moved. Okay, any discussion? Oh, Councilmember McLeimans.
Yeah, so I asked this to not be put on the consent agenda because it's a significant investment. It's the beginning of that step to update the water and build that reservoir. And you know, we just went through the process and are still going through the process of deciding how we pay for development and, and service for, for water. So I thought it was appropriate just to put this as a full council so that we understand it's a significant investment. This is on the order of half a million. And we're heading towards $7 million in expenditure.
Okay. Do we have any further discussion? Thank you. Deputy Mayor Carter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess I'm going to use Councilmember McLeimans' normal question, which is what happens if we pass this to them?
Well, in a nutshell, we won't begin design. That's the simple answer. The, the larger answer here though is that this, there are two reservoirs actually coming up over the next four years that require construction. They require construction because we are considered a water system that is storage deficient. What does that term mean? So in order to answer that question, I'll try and keep it as brief as possible. But when we design reservoirs, there's five components to the storage in that reservoir that have certain criteria that are required to be met. That's operational storage, standby storage, equalizing storage, fire suppression storage, and dead storage. Dead storage is just what it sounds like. It's water that is at such a low elevation, it can't be used. It's always in the tank. Operational storage is the amount of storage that you need to have in there to serve your population on a normal consumption day. Equalizing storage is the storage that you need to have in the tank in order to equalize with demand when your sources on their own can't meet the demand in the system. You need that water in the tank to make up that difference. Operational goes on the stamp. Standby at storage, I always have to count them off on my fingers. Standby storage is the amount of water that's necessary to have in the reservoir in order to serve your customers when you have a source go offline, you have equipment failures or whatever. And then fire suppression storage is exactly what it sounds like. This is the amount of water you need to have in the reservoir in order to fight a fire. And it is defined as the amount of water that is necessary to be able to sustain fire suppression flow for the building with the highest fire rating in that particular zone that the reservoir serves. The other ones are required, the requirements are that they meet certain pressures at the home that is highest in the zone. And so as we all know, the pressure, a certain column of water exerts a certain amount of pressure, right? So that height of that column in that tank divided across the area of that, of that tank is a pressure. And so that's a certain volume that needs to be met. It's required. You can't deviate from that amount. If you can't meet that and you don't have enough storage in the reservoir, then you're considered storage deficient. And that's a problem that needs to be rectified in this case with new reservoirs because you can't just add height onto the existing reservoirs. To not meet that requirement potentially puts our customers in jeopardy. If we were to have a worst case scenario where we had a source down and we had to fight a fire and we couldn't meet that demand, we've got a big problem on our hands. So that's why these reservoirs are necessary and which is why we're going down the path of starting design on this reservoir tonight or moving this contract forward tonight.
Well, thank you, Mr. John Stone. Ms. Ryerson.
To also address Deputy Mayor Carter and Councilmember McLeimans' questions, part of the water rate ordinance laid out that we would be applying and actually receiving, we did receive, we just haven't brought to council, although we don't have it yet, the loan to pay for the Lake Ridge reservoir. So this is already penciled out, if you will, in your ordinance to be paid for by the loan. And we hope to see, we're waiting for the paperwork on that. We hope to see that. Ryan and I were talking about that before the meeting in the next couple of weeks. So that should be before you guys soon.
Councilmember McLeimans.
Yeah, so thank you for that clarification. Really appreciate it because the water system is critical, right? It is the value the city provides, but it's like really complex, right? You guys do a good job. We, we appreciate it. So thank you for that.
Okay. Do we have any further discussion on the matter? Ready to take to, oh, Councilmember Swatman.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. No, I'd just like to note that, you know, this is definitely something we need to do because obviously, you know, as the mini CDC lesson there on Public Works, that's very nice. We can discuss water pressure forever, right? This is the tank of note that was in the same location many, many years ago that was attempted to be built. And because of some political infighting, it was not built there. It needs to be built there. It would have been built there, I don't know, a decade ago or something like that. And as you would imagine, a little bit cheaper back then, right? The irony is, of course, and it's notable because I'm going to vote yes on this unless somebody has some brighter ideas, that we'll have a new council member, at least one new council member come November 17th. And there is a possibility that that council member could be the family that successfully fought to not have this tank in place. So that's just of note because if you're looking at me in whatever it would be February saying, what is this person talking about? Then you'll know. Because please remember that there should be enough people then to say, we don't care. We need to build this thing because we're going to spend 400 and what, $85,000, whatever it is.
438.
You need to build it at the end with the rest of the thing. So this is one of those deals where, you know, we have the money. We need to do the project. It needs to go all the way through. So vote yes today, keeping in mind that you probably really should be voting yes later on when you get the $4 million bid.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Swatman. We have any further discussion? All right, we are ready to take this to a vote. All in favor of Resolution 3157, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, let the record reflect that Resolution 57 was passed unanimously. Next issue, Madam Clerk.
This is AB 23105, Resolution 3165. The council motion would be to authorize staff to negotiate an agreement with Mount Rainier Football Club for a public private partnership for development of park and recreation facilities.
So moved. Second. Any discussion on the matter? We've had lots of discussion from one side of the room. Let's hear it from this side. Yeah. All right. Deputy Mayor Carter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, same, same thing as before. This is a step towards something. We're not sure what yet. This gives staff an opportunity to look at specifically, we're talking about the fields and whatnot, but also with the rec program, hey, is there a way we can do this that works together? Nobody wants to get rid of the rec program. The rec program is a, is a good thing. And I think that the, the subject matter experts with the rec program should be involved in this whole process as well. So I would just throw that out there, but I will definitely be voting yes for this and thank you for the opportunity.
All right. Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Any further discussion on the matter, Councilmember Watson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Back in 2017, the city of Sumner decided not to support this program, which is actually the Sumner Bonnie Lake School District Rec Program. They came to Bonnie Lake and they brought to us to talk about. At that time, I had some concerns, but I voted for it. I always have supported the Parks Recreation Department. Need to support these kids for sports, weekends or weekdays, whatever they need to help their, get them out, out the field, you know, outside the house. I had some reservations about this, what Councilman Carter, Deputy Carter brought forward to us. But as I've heard, it's just for a discussion only purpose. I did not want to lose what we have going now forward. If we do, I won't vote for it later on in the future. So I'm going to vote for this tonight reluctantly because I want to see what they had to say. Have we done other programs in the past? But what we have now, I don't want us to lose. I don't want to lose the associates that we have working the program who care about the kids. And there are so many families that working moms that work in the morning, dads at night or vice versa. The kids need someplace to go to, to get these type of educational supports to the future, get their abilities to go into maybe sports as a professional field later on. So I will support this tonight, but long as we keep same type of formation together in the future.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Watson. Councilmember Fullerton.
Yeah, so I'm looking, I've been looking over this proposal for the last week or so. I don't see anything. I don't see anything about getting rid of parks and rec. What I do see is that Bonnie Lake has been wanting more ballfields and more parks for years so that we can expand our sports program. What this is doing, this is a proposal to open up the Reed property, which is about 20 acres out, which right now is not within the city. It looks like it would be proposed that we annex it into the city property to build many parks that our kids can play on and we would open up that to all different sports. There's a possibility of, you know, soccer fields and baseball and football, flag football, walking soccer for seniors. So these are all just opening up and creating new parts. This isn't anything about getting rid of any programs. If anything, I, it looks that it would expand the Parks and Rec and give an option of more legal fields that the kids could play on and advance possibly. I would not ever vote to get rid of the Parks and Rec program, but I will be voting to look into the possibilities of this public and private forward movement to create more park space in Bonnie Lake for our community.
Yes.
And it would not be to the expense of the city as well.
All right. Oh, I'm sorry. Didn't mean to. Thank you, Councilmember Fullerton. Councilmember Evans.
All right. Thank you very much. As it's been previously stated, the, the whole purpose of this is because of our code. Any, any organization, any group can bring forward any proposal. By our code, staff has to present that to us before they can move forward with discussions. And, and that's really what we're doing here tonight. This is just simply allowing the, the great people that work here to start a conversation with, with Mount, Mount Rainier Football Club. When it's all said and done, they may have a completely different proposal that, one, there's not really a proposal. We have, we have a 30,000 foot view of what they'd like to look at. There's, there's no details in here by anything. So whatever you're seeing on social media about slashing programs and raising prices, you can see it in the back there. It's a two-page proposal. It's, it's super top level. With that being said, six months to a year from now, we may have something come before the council again. If we go that route, we'll have updates from staff long before we get any sort of proposal given to us. We want to make sure that any proposals that are given are being followed in an order in which the council is comfortable with directing staff to go down that road. We won't see something come back that we haven't seen and then we vote on it that night. There will be public discussions. I love having all the shareholders involved, the county, the, the amazing staff at the Parks and Rec program right now, the school district, I'd love to have them at the table as well, MFRC, city staff, anyone and everyone that's got a share in this should be at the table when, when our staff has done meeting and, and get all of that input there. It's no different than if we were to do a, a new park, we'd have a roundtable, we'd have a whole bunch of open discussions, we'd have a lot of communications there. So, so what you're seeing on social media is not what's represented by here tonight. We're simply taking a vote to see, can we authorize staff to just have that discussion? When that proposal comes back, if that proposal comes back, staff may say, you know what? We vetted it. It's not a good fit for us, or this is a good fit for us, this isn't a good fit for us. Like I said, it can come back in any, any form and, and we're talking no sooner than six months, probably closer to here. And like Director Williams said, slowing down on this may be the, the better option and breaking this up into multiple layers and, and bringing it forward in, in different manners is probably the way we need to go. So I'll be supporting this tonight simply because it's the start of the communication. I would never support anything that took away any of the existing Parks and Rec program, any of the father-daughter dance, anything else that they do. It's a great program. I support it. I, I want to see it grow and that's what we're attempting to do with this. Mount Rainier Football Club, Club came to us. We have a potential to grow not only our rec program, but our sports program as well. If we have more fields, this is going to be a significant financial undertaking that no one in this room, other than the gentleman there in the blue shirt, is going to have to undertake it at some point if it comes back, that they're willing to cover, you know, a lot of the build-out costs. And that's really what we're trying to do here is be fiscally responsible to everyone that we represent here in the city and make sure that we can grow a program that's kind of stagnant right now with, because we're in, we're in limbo with, with some inter-local agreements. We're, we're trying to figure some things out with some other groups, but right now all we want to do is open that line of communication. We want to make sure that this program can grow. A lot of you have been through the program, have grown in the program, your kids have grown in the program. It's, I mean, we have an Olympic gold medalist right here that came through the program, her kids went through the program. We want to make sure that that's there forever. And, and I don't think, I can't speak for the council, but I, I would, I think comfortably I can say if any one existing program on that list today was removed from that program, I don't think any of us would vote for that. So I just want to throw that out there. We're not attempting to shrink anything. We're just trying to make sure that we can grow and get better. The city is financially limited with what we can do as far as our Parks and Rec, or our Parks program. We've been looking at creative solutions to expand that and this was an opportunity that came up to us that we didn't go out and seek. We didn't go out for proposal. This was brought to us and just like I said, per our code, we have to do what we're doing tonight in order to even have that discussion. So I'm for this tonight to start that discussion.
All right. Thank you. Councilmember Evans. Yes, the list that Councilmember Fullerton touched upon is certainly not exhausted in this. All right. Councilmember Baldwin.
Yeah. First of all, thank you to everybody that came up and spoke. It is a terrifying thing to come up to the microphone, so I just want to, I have been on the other side of that and your heart beats and your heart's racing and you don't even know if you're saying the right thing. And so I just really appreciate all of the feedback. I have been reading through the emails and talking with a couple of parents that are my students' parents and I could see how there was some confusion. I was looking at this proposal and reading through it and one of the things that I was reading through was in proposal two, and that's on page 213 of the agenda packet. I could see where people made assumptions, not necessarily in that we were going to make a decision tonight, but just that MRFC was going to take over the program because the wording does sound like that in the proposal two. And just so everybody knows, and I'm sure the council agrees as well, that's not something that we want to do because it does say MRFC would like to adopt the current sports and recreation portion of the Parks and Rec plan. So I could see, I can understand why that was misinterpreted. And so, but I will echo what other council members have said in that we really have been at a loss in trying to figure out how to create more community space as far as usable recreational space. And so when this came, you know, on the horizon and we saw that there was, you know, 20 acres of property that essentially has been sitting and not doing anything and someone came forward to then, you know, propose something, it was like, hmm, you know, especially because we have looked into the cost of those kinds of things and they're just, they're astronomical. They're, they're huge and, and we've been trying to figure out, how do we not continue to ask citizens for more money and, you know, those kinds of things? And so, and I'm assuming then, I'm so sorry, I didn't catch your name, but you're with MRFC and you, are you referring to Scott Corliss?
Scott.
Okay. Gotcha, gotcha. But yeah, I, I know that, I think one of the biggest concerns moving forward and just so that, and, and I feel like we all agree to this as well, we, we feel the same way. But one of the concerns that was raised in an email by one of the parents is that recreational programs, I mean, I love rec sports. I'm not a big, you know, club sports person. My kids have done rec sports too. And the biggest problem is, is when my kids have attempted to do some sort of a club sport, it's very intimidating, even if it's part of a club program. Like my daughters have never played softball and they were on a softball team this year and it's like all the kids, half of them are select players and it's very intimidating. They don't, they get benched a lot. They don't really, they're not a part of, the, the coaches aren't focusing in on them either because they're not the, you know, they're not the prime team members, you know, on there, but they're learning, like they haven't been doing it their entire lives. And so I really understand that piece of it. And so, and I think the other part of it too is the cost portion. Of course, in reading this, this proposal here, this, you know, conversation starter, if you will, I don't see anything about money, but, but just know that that is something that we want to definitely put our finger on if, if that were to come about because there's no way. I know for me, I have multiple kids and I can't pay 150 plus, you know, amount, whereas like you go to play rec sports and it's totally affordable. And so just with all of that, just know that is, that is the discussions that, that are going to be had and that we will be advocating for those kinds of things. And yeah, I think that's all I have to say about that.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Baldwin. Do we have any further discussion? Councilmember Swatman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, so of course, this is not required for the council to take this particular action. It's not in the code that the council is required to take this action.
It's not. I, I was told that tonight.
Well, they, they misspoke. How's that grab you? But it is a good idea to inform the public as much as possible, right? And that's always been one of my things and I think many other council members would agree, keeping the public informed about these things is really, you know, is paramount. We do work for you, obviously, the public. You know, we're, we're here to do hopefully good things for the public and this, you know, the concept of making Parks and Rec bigger, better, stronger, adapt and overcome, if I can steal a phrase, that, that would be definitely something we need to do. I'm, I'm more of a procedural person, so you know, as much as I would love to tell the mayor what he can and cannot do, I know my job as a legislator is not that role. You know, my job is to vote yes and no on proposals. So I'd like to look at a lot more information. I'd like for the public to have a lot more information, a lot more time involved with it. I, I love what everybody came to say about making sure that all the stakeholders were involved and all this consideration because the information that I initially have on this is, there's a lot of misopinions. They're just, they're just people thinking things that aren't, that aren't correct out there. So that tells me that it hasn't been really publicly vetted very well. And again, that's part of the process that we're going to vote on, right? We're saying, yeah, this is something we want to look at doing. So, Mr. Mayor, let's, let's have staff go do this kind of thing. But then I fall back into this, well, I can't tell the mayor what to do or not to do.
Oh, it doesn't stop you.
I could try. Does it work? I appreciate the cutting of the weeds, by the way. Still, so you know, I'm, I think it's a, it's a good direction to have a stronger rec program because I know there's some structural issues going on out there right now with fields and everything that, that really, you know, needs some more attention. So it'll be good in the end to have a really great discussion on this, but it currently, you know, I'm not going to say yes to this particular aspect because as I did with a very similar thing that we said, it's just kind of a procedural thing to me to say, you know, I'm not ready to say yes to the concept without a lot more details behind it. So that's just my opinion. Thanks.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Swatman. Councilmember McLemons, and then we'll come down.
Yeah, so I'll make it quick because you've already heard the good stuff. Thanks for being here. Thank you for your passion. That includes MRFC, MCAC. I want to commend all of you, but really I do want to commend the fact that somebody's working here to make our Parks and Rec program better from a different angle. Just to give you an idea, discussion at the CDC was about spending $200,000 to install a place that we already own in a park that we already have in an area that's ready to receive the place set. So if that doesn't disturb you, that the city's option for building and installing a place that it costs $200,000, you can imagine how much money, your tax money, your fees would go to building a facility like is being proposed. So that is just, just some background there. I, I have confidence in this council. This council is very good at debating. They're very open. We have great discussion and I have confidence that nobody on here would cut the park and rec. That is not anybody on this council's motivation. We're, we're working hard to figure out how to find money to build a park. We, we're suffering with building the Field 5 park, the problems that that caused and we're learning from it. We will build better parks. We will have a better Parks and Rec program, right? And the fact that private partnership, public partnership is out there and somebody's figuring out how to make it work, we should all be applauding that. That is amazing because I'll guarantee you, they're not going to spend $200,000 to install a place set. You give them $200,000, you're going to get three or four soccer fields, right? So it's an amazing opportunity. We're not going to close the door on it. I'm going to support this tonight, the fact they explore it, but like the rest of the council said, when it comes back to us, the, the vote on, on it, I hope we have the same robust discussion we have tonight because that's really what local government is about. You being here with your passion, asking the question. So to answer the question, I would never, never say, we're not going to have drama, we're not going to have volleyball, we're not going to have soccer. No, the Parks and Rec program needs to be for everyone, including senior walking soccer, right? That sounds fabulous. Anyway, that's, that's all I have. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember McLemons. Councilmember Fullerton.
Yeah, I just wanted to kind of second what everybody else said. I do appreciate, I love when the public comes and speaks at the council meetings. It is so important. That's why we're here. That's why we're called local government, so that your voices can be heard and we are, we do hear you and we are listening and truly appreciate you being here. I did want to add that I think with some of the comments that I heard from the staff, I do feel that when we do start coming up with proposals and considering whether this is something that's going to move forward, we definitely need to have our director involved, our Parks and Rec director needs to be involved and the staff as well for any conversations when it starts to get serious before we accept any proposals. We, we definitely need to hear from staff and the community as well, which I know that will happen, but a lot of times when we're getting these proposals, it's within the city administrators and executives, but the, the staff hasn't been told what's going on. And when we have three or four staff members come because they've heard something over social media and they haven't heard it from the council or from the administrator, then that seems like a lack of communication and the staff should definitely be the first to know when there's a discussion and definitely need to make sure that the directors are involved. So that's just my two cents.
Thank you, Councilmember Fullerton. Are we ready to take this matter to a vote? It seems so.
A vote for discussion, correct?
Yes, it would be a vote for discussion.
Actually, I have one more thing to say.
Yes, and?
Um.
Councilmember Baldwin.
Yeah, in, in regards to what you were saying, Councilmember Swatman, is this something that we have to vote on? Or is this something that we just give direction to the city as like normal? Because you do bring up a good point. Is that, is it something that we need to vote for direction or do we just let them know?
Well, that's.
Procedurally speaking.
It's a good question for our city attorney or, or, and, okay, Jason.
So in our development agreement chapter, which we wrote at the last meeting, when there's a proposal that is controversial and will require staff time to work through many different layers, it provides the option for the staff to bring forward a resolution to the city council to see if the city council wants us to expend legal resources because we will be spending a lot of legal resources on this, staff time to negotiate the agreement. Those are ultimately bills that the city council will have to pay, which is why we bring these resolutions forward. It's not so much to authorize the resolution, but for the council to be aware that we're embarking on this effort. When there is controversial type issues, it's going to require a lot of time to work through. So it's not a mandatory, it's an option at the staff level to bring forward a resolution. If the council were to vote no, we would have to talk internally whether or not we want to continue to negotiate because we wouldn't have kind of the council's support to expend the resources, right? So that's really, if you leak about it tonight, the, the question before the council really is, do you want us to expend resources that are not in our normal work plan on negotiating this type of an agreement?
Did you can have her or me?
And I'll go ahead and I'll add to that. So.
So Ms. Solomon is correct, you're, you are not required to do this, but I think that it's good practice on the part of the city staff to bring things that will, were not anticipated in the budget, that will require resources to just gage the interest of the council in at least letting the staff have a license to hunt, if you will, and see if we can bring something to the council ultimately that will be in the public interest. So it also adds a lot of transparency to the process. As you can see, we have a lot of people that came down tonight and had we just, had the mayor just given direction for us to start negotiating, it would have been non-transparent to the council and not transparent to the public. So I think from a procedural perspective, you don't have to do it, but I think from a practice standpoint on the staff, we would like to bring these things over to the council to gauge interest before we spend taxpayer resources on them.
It would be transparent and expedition, it just helps expedite the process.
Exactly, and we want to make sure that we're not doing something that the council's not at all interested in having the staff do.
All right. Thank you, Ms. Robertson. Do we have any further, oh, Councilmember McLeimans?
Yeah, one last thing from a procedural. I appreciate Councilmember Swatman pointing this out, but after the motion is made and seconded, it's too late, we're doing it, right? That's the way the procedure works. So we should consider what Councilmember Swatman says for the next time. But on the other hand, I think the benefit of having a public here, right, and being transparent is amazing, it's awesome, I'm so happy about that. So we don't have to do it, but thank you staff for doing it because we got a good result out of it, I think.
That is a good, a point well taken, Councilmember McLeimans, Councilmember Swatman.
So, so I understand though, but the motion made and seconded and then there was discussion, correct, right? Yeah, so the council doesn't have to say yes or no to anything, you know, just procedurally wise, I'm not arguing about this particular issue, right? So the, the council could choose to table the issue, to take more public input, the council could choose to have a public hearing on it. One thing that's kind of piqued my interest and is of course, when they use the word agreement, right? If, if somebody's paying attention and the lawyer's probably looking at me sideways, when you use the word agreement, it, there's two parties involved, notice, right? You're trying to figure this out, you're like, wait a minute, city and somebody else. So, you know, I'm more worried about having all the stakeholders in the room and, and involved in the conversation and I encourage the mayor, clearly he'll have the authority to do this, to have many different stakeholders in the room and make sure everyone's informed. Like Councilmember Fullerton was trying to make the point of the staff and/or public should not have the kind of questions that they have now because if they do, they have failed to communicate properly what the issues are. We should not have the question where I am getting emails from a constituent that is telling me that the city is doing things behind closed doors. They could have that opinion, but I should be able to tell them, oh no, you don't understand, you missed this meeting, you missed this meeting, you missed that public hearing, you missed this time to comment. I don't have any of that information, so I can make that. So just procedurally, I'm going to vote no. I think the idea has a lot of good concepts. I think it's great. I think the mayor and deputy mayor are doing a great job in pushing this forward.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Swatman. Okay, now we are ready to take this matter to a vote. All in favor of Resolution 3165, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Okay, I think it's six to one is the count, Madam Clerk. Next issue, please.
This is AB 2382, ordinance D 2382. The council motion would be to amend section 10.36.015 of the Bonny Lake Municipal Code and the corresponding portion of ordinance number 1638 relating to restricted parking on Sky Island Drive.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion on the matter? Councilmember McLeimans.
Okay, so, yeah, I asked to have this off the consent agenda because this is obviously important to the public, right? So the only other place I've gotten as many emails as Parks has been, Sky Island Parking. I have yet to get anybody who wants to remove the signs. So based on that, I'm going to vote for this.
Yay. Okay, any further discussion on the matter? Oh, and we have the approval from our chief. Okay, so let's take it to a vote. All in favor of ordinance 2382, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, it is by unanimous vote. Madam Clerk, could you read the next issue, please?
This is motion M 2384. The council motion would be to authorize the use of American Rescue Plan Act funds to hire two temporary full-time employees for the Parks Division of Public Services for one year.
So moved. Okay. Do we have any discussion on the matter? Councilmember McLeimans.
Yeah, so I asked this to come off the consent agenda as well. Hiring employees is, is important, is an important step for the city, right? We got to get our work done, we got to keep our commitments, but on the other hand, it is also a commitment to those employees, right? So I'm always concerned when we add staff to the city because, and see staff comes with expectations, they create relationships with the community and they become vital. I was concerned because this is, the ARPA funds give us a path for one year, right? And I just wanted to talk to the council and, and let you know that this is a commitment to the employee that will be hired and it, you know, we're going to wind up finding sometime next year, you know, how we fund these employees going forward. I doubt they're going away.
Right. All right, Councilmember Robertson.
Thank you, Councilmember McLeimans. Not only is this a commitment to the employees, it's also a commitment to our Parks program, which has been severely lacking these employees for many, many, many years. So I, I appreciate us finding creative ways to get them on the books this year without having to impact the city or the citizens at this point. But it is something that we, Ryan's mentioned it many, many times before, we need more people. Are we, we, up until now, we still only have two and two. We have 22,000 people in the city and we have two people in our Parks Division. And, and I know I've heard it for the last eight years that we need more and, and I'm, I'm happy to vote yes on this. I hope a future council, next biennium, can figure out ways to be creative with additional resources to keep these people here and, and you know, we've got a new park that we, we're going to do a ribbon cutting on that, that's going to be a lot of manpower there, people power, and we're, we're going to need that for future growth. So I'll be in support of this.
You hear that, Ms. Robertson? Hey, Councilmember Baldwin.
Yeah, I certainly echo what you just said, two people is certainly not enough. Is there a plan, I guess in the long term, my question is always just from the financial standpoint, so is, is there a plan in place to figure out how we are going to be able to fund extra employees because we do need them? And so I'm just wondering where that is going to come from financially.
I'm wondering the same thing.
Okay. Okay. Okay, but essentially they're going to be temporary for the year, but really the hope is to keep them on long-term.
Absolutely. I, you know, we, we need the help. This is just one area where I.
Yeah.
This, this is just one area where, where we are desperate. We're only creating more and building more items. We, we owe it to our citizens to be able to build and take care of it. It's a lasting legacy for all of us.
This will buy us some time, sorry, this will buy us some time to have those conversations when the next budget preparation comes up would be next July. So the staff will still be on board at that point under ARPA funds and we'll be able to try to bring you guys a balanced budget at that time for the 25, 26 biennium.
Okay, so just to clarify on this, we are talking about if this is approved, we are talking about are ARPA funds financing these two temporary employees? And then we are going to be taking up the conversation on how to fund these employees 13 months from now? Is that?
Correct.
Yes.
Yeah, we would have that conversation next July.
Okay.
With you.
Well, thank you. All right. Do we have any further discuss, oh, Councilmember McLeimans?
Two points. First point is, I don't believe there was anything about them being temporary employees.
It said temporary.
Did they say temporary?
Yeah.
Temporary full-time employees.
I blocked, I blocked that right out because I figured, I figured they, you know, they're going to, we need to keep them, right? I mean, that's a no-brainer like the other council members have said for a long time. So even though that is, we, we recognize you need the employees and I still have to ask the question, what happens if I don't vote?
We're going to continue to fall behind in maintenance and, you know, we have some tremendous assets out there that. Thank you. Let's try that one instead. Let me turn to mute that one.
You have like an energy, that's why it's always.
It must be my aura or something. We're going to continue to fall behind and, and I don't say that as a discredit to the two staff we have, they do an amazing job, they really do. But it's, it's oftentimes, it's the things that pop up that we weren't counting on. Today, our, our new Field Five got tagged all over the place, the bathrooms, light poles, everything else. That takes time that, you know, we didn't think we'd have to spend on something like that. And that, that is happening fairly often, you know, we've got, we've got the new trail segments that require a ton of vegetation maintenance. We also, our park staff is who maintains the landscaping around the buildings, which honestly, I think is completely inappropriate. They don't need to be spending their time maintaining the landscaping around the buildings. They need to be maintaining the trails and the parks.
Thank you. Councilmember Fullerton.
Do we not have surveillance cameras available? Is there availability?
Not at Field Five yet, no.
Not yet, or?
We are evaluating that.
Okay.
And Councilmember Swatman.
So I read also that they're temporary employees, so I'm kind of trying to get more information on that. They're either temporary or they're not. I kind of hearing both sides of the issue there. They are union employees, I would gather.
But they, yeah, they'd be represented and that.
But they're not on the org chart.
They are not.
Or the, right.
And it is budgeted differently as far as, it's kind of like a contract, on a contract basis right now with the.
No, so it would be used same as your limited-term legal assistant under ARPA funds. Currently, you have a limited-term position there as well and that ends November 30 of 2024. This is the same thing, it's temporary, limited term, with the hope and intent to try to figure out a way to fund all of these competing interests, you know, recreation, parks employees, all your city staff. We need to have some more conversations about how we come up with that money and how you intend to keep those employees.
Yeah, I, I just want to make it, I don't want to hire people that have an expectation of having employment three years later, right? So apparently in their employment agreement or something, we're doing the term of their employment, that type of thing to make sure that we're walking down that line because I would imagine, you know, we want to keep everybody okay with the, the union and all those folks so that we don't step on any toes out there because this is very important to check all the.
The other agreement that is out there says limited term, legal specialist. So these would be limited-term parks maintenance.
And this is, this is.
And then should the council find a way to continue to fund them, we'll take off the limited term, keep the employees.
I take the mayor's word for it. He's, he's good at that, he's good at executing the city. Thank you.
Sums. So. All right, are we ready to take the matter to a vote? I believe so. So all in favor of motion 2384, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right. So motion D 2384 has been voted in unanimously. Seeing no more business, we are adjourned. Thank, I want to thank everybody for being here and participating.